Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated October 31st, 2024, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners. Dear Commissioners, A regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, November 5th, 2024 at 5:15 PM in the conference room at the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for all our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of our citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Melner?
Here.
Commissioner View?
Here.
Commissioner Prozdel?
Here.
Commissioner Van Genhoven?
Here.
And Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Okay. Thank you for coming. And we will start it off by a special orders of business. We need to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of 10:15, somebody?
10:15, 24.
Yep, and I'm sorry I didn't get those done.
10:15, 24.
We'll have them at the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll table them. Do we need a motion to table?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to table.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, approval of the agenda.
We have some adjustments. We need to, item number two, that was forwarded from the Planning Commission, so have number two removed from new business for this evening.
Okay.
So we're removing under new business number two. That is the compatible renewable energy ordinance.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Can I have a second?
I will second.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, why are we removing that? I was just curious, because I did a lot of studying on it and I didn't know. I'm just curious, let the public know why it's not being discussed.
Glad you heard that. It's because the actual ordinance portion has been meant forward from the Planning Committee to here.
The Planning Commission has to hear it first.
Oh, okay. They didn't have a meeting to look at that?
We had a meeting last night, but it was not a finished product as of yet.
Okay, so we're just delayed a little.
And that's why it's on there, because if they would have finished it, then we would have taken action on it.
Yep, no worries.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay, presentation of written communications received or forwarded. There is?
Yep.
Yep, on 1.5 info.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So can I get a motion to put that on file?
Make motion to put the communications received, communications forwarded on file.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay, reports of standing statutory and special ordinances other, there was none.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Yep.
Oh.
We have five minutes, well, five entities.
Yep.
Okay.
We have Solid Waste Authority, Human Services Board, Pinecrest Board, and Airport Advisory Board. That's on our 1.5. I'm sorry, what was that Nancy?
And the Township Association.
Oh, the township, yes, I apologize.
Yes. Sorry about that. Can I?
Oh, you make a motion to put those on file, please.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Let's see here. Go down to public comment on agenda items. Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, see none. We will move down to the Administrator's Report.
Just a few items to touch up on. The addressing committee dispatcher director Peterson and I presented to the Delta Township Association on the progress of the addressing project. And I just want to send my gratitude again to the townships for their patience and valuable feedback that we received during that meeting, and to the county departments, building and zoning equalization, Central Dispatch, and then also we have Delta County Road Commission for their dedication to this project. It's seen some obstacles, and we have definitely overcome those obstacles. Our internal health group met, and we have selected plans. So we're currently finalizing a few details, so we'll move forward from there. The Delta County Airport, I had a recent discussion with our airport manager, Rand Stadler, discussing like the needs of plowing. So we are looking to contract temporarily about three months to assist in plowing needs of just the parking lot. The Delta County Road Commission takes care of the airport road, and we have our airport ops that take care of on the airfield. It would just be our parking lot, just due to some staffing commitments and such. Delta County Park and Recreation Department, I went on a tour with Park Manager Weary to outline the proposed locations on the O.B. Fuller project, the Pavilion Playground in four blocks areas. He's working on a plan that will be forwarded through, sorry, the appropriate committees or commissions. I also seen that he was updating the bathrooms over in the new loop area, and they're looking pretty fantastic, so that was exciting. Commissioner Jensen and I have been participating in a lot of negotiation meetings. We had two recently with Central Dispatch. We have one more meeting with them, and that's just basically finalizing the tentative agreement, making it a nice pretty package. We also have district court, circuit court corrections that are coming up. And finally, the opioid task force have completed their request for funding proposal, and it's attached on my admin report for anybody that wants to review it. So in our next meeting, they'll be seeking approval from the Commissioners for this RFP. And that would be it, besides happy election day. Don't forget, we can still vote till 8:00 PM tonight.
Put the report on file.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? Any questions for?
Just a comment. Is this opioid task force, RFP, available for the public? They can see this in the packet?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And then one other thing. The O.B. Fuller Park Campground, is the projected project still moving forward? Or is this just something that we're looking at changing or not? Is that placement like you talked about, where the proposed location of the pavilion and stuff built in the same spot?
So our locations, there's some aspects of the project that hasn't changed, and there was, I think it's all part of the original proposal. But Steve is preparing all of it together to present. I don't really want to get into too much detail. This is on what he's planning.
Oh, but it was something I was looking forward to finishing before my term. That's all. Well, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
Okay, departmental updates. Any departmental updates? Yeah, there is none. Unfinished business. Unfinished business. Number one is the Planning Commission bylaws update.
Move to table.
Can I have a support?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Why are we taking it again? Is that the same thing that we talked about before?
Yep, we have to hold a public hearing at the Planning Commission level. We thought it was at the county level, but it's actually at the Planning Commission level. So at yesterday's meeting, we set the public hearing for the first meeting, for our meeting in December, and then it'll come here for approval.
Okay, makes sense.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed to table. Number two, Planning Commission ordinance update.
Move to table.
Support for the same reason. Then I'll support it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. We'll move on to new business, payment of bills.
I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills of $1,894,797.97, and commissioner expenses of $354.75.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the sum of $1,894,797.97 and commissioners' expenses in the sum of $354.75.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call?
View?
Yes.
Prozdel?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes. Yes. Okay, we will move on to number two, compatible renewable?
No, number three.
Huh?
Three.
Oh, that's right.
Three.
Class action, compatible renewable energy ordinance, P.A.
233. So I added this onto the agenda. I believe several of you have already seen this document. It was passed around during the Delta County Township Association meeting. It's also been given through the Michigan Association of Counties. It aligns an opportunity for Delta County to participate in a class action lawsuit against the Michigan Public Service Commission regarding public act 233. If the commission is interested in joining the appeal, we will need to notify Foster Swift properly. I brought this forward because I'm unable to make this move without a Commissioner's approval, so.
If, oh, may I?
Yes.
Oh, do we need a motion?
Well, let's get a motion second first. Can we get a motion?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll get a, I'll second.
What are we motioning?
Wait, is it the motion to go into a lawsuit?
Is the motion to approve?
Yeah, the motion to approve, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
To approve the P.A.?
Joining.
Joining the lawsuit.
Yeah.
So we can have a discussion.
And who supported it?
I did.
Okay, so we can discuss now?
Mm-hmm, yep.
It, what comes out of our pocket for this, if anything?
It was not detailed in any of the communications I received. So I would seek for permission to participate, open up the discussion, to have a conversation with them.
Okay, but that wasn't what the motion was. The motion was to enter into the class action lawsuit.
Should, that would be the P.A., P.A., P.A. 233.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I believe, was it, one of the townships I spoke of, they didn't even bring it in.
I think Escanaba Township is the one that's really?
Yep, so.
Steve?
I can speak about that. Yeah, it's, Escanaba Township would like to join Foster Swift. At this point, the public act, what is it?
233.
233. My involvement, my observations over the last year, along with the petition to try to get the power back to the community, but what I've seen is I've had constituents get a hold of me, and they have rights too, and they feel that this is a waste of time and money to fight the Michigan Public Service Commission. Some details that I'm not even familiar with to the point that it's 160-some page document. It's very precise, and I've talked to some of the solar providers, like DTE, and they're saying that it could be a battle and it could cost them money. And we'll lose money by trying to move forward with this lawsuit at this point. I'm trying to stay neutral, because I represent both sides. A lot of people don't want industrial solar. There are some that want it. And I just think that the state made their decision, and it's all about an overly district, if anyone knows what that's about.
Yes, I do.
Do we have a date that we have to respond to this by, Ashley?
Yeah, it's like quick.
Yeah, it's really quick.
November 8th, I think, or something.
Yes, November 8th, that was the date.
One of the parts in it, though, is, and I think what spurred the portion of the lawsuit, it's not against solar, that isn't it.
Right.
It was the fact that Public Service Commission, who is an administrative organization in the executive branch, decided to act as if they were in the legal portion.
It's just an overreach?
Yeah.
Of power, basically.
And that's what the big part is.
Yeah, they're trying, they're trying to take the township and the county authority away from them.
If we don't follow specific?
Right.
Yeah. Um, given the fact that we don't have any concrete numbers provided here, because you said you haven't reached out to them. And the cutoff is November 8th, so that's three days from now.
Yeah.
So even if she were to reach out, she would still need our approval, so then we would have to hold a special meeting, which we need 18 hours notice.
Well, Mr. Chair, I wouldn't support this anyways, in the way it was presented to the point that I think it's a backdoor loop to try to stop the projects that are potentially on the table now. And the only, the only reason some of these ordinances or acts are coming through is because there hasn't been any cooperation with the townships. And it's not just Escanaba, there's a bunch in the whole state. There's probably, if I'm not mistaken, 80 to 100 townships that are going on to this lawsuit. I think the lawsuit's going to go forward anyways, and I would not support Delta County being part of it at this point.
There's actually several of them, I think, that are pending.
Yeah, there's several counties.
What Foster Swift is trying to render is much support to fight this, to keep the cost down and?
This one specifically, though, that we were asked on that came through the Township Association, was of the Public Service Commission's overreach.
Yep.
Nothing about canceling any projects, that's not it. It's about the overreach that they did in, in the course of their business, where they decided they were, they were judges versus?
And the reason to fight that, because the other side says it's not an overreach, so.
And your Township Association is strictly against this also.
Okay, regardless of, you know, that, we don't have any numbers. We don't know how much it's going to cost us to enter into this. We could instruct Ashley to reach out to them, but by the time we got something back, we probably wouldn't have time to hold a special meeting and get in on time. So it's kind of like today would be like an all or nothing, right?
Basically, I know. It's not a favorable outcome.
Right. Well, we do have a motion and a support, so.
Well, it's under new business, and it was just given that long ago, and it is, how many pages long? 10 pages? So we didn't have a chance to review it.
Excuse me?
Well, it's, I think it's only a page.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a page.
It's a page. I don't know.
I think you're looking at the new business two, the trio.
Oh, that's what it was.
Next one.
It's three, new business three, the letter from Foster Swift.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's?
It was given to us last week.
Yeah.
So we do have, we do have a motion and a support.
We do have a motion and support out there. We had discussion, or any more discussion?
And that, and the motion is to enter into the lawsuit.
But I definitely would want to send some numbers.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Sure.
Roll.
Ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, View?
No.
Prozdel?
No.
Van Genhoven?
No.
Jensen?
No.
And Melner?
No. Okay. So we move on to number four, zoning case number three dash 24 dash PC. Want to use one to take this?
No.
Okay, so in last night's Planning Commission, the, it was the changing of a parcel from agricultural production to rural residential, so that can be split into smaller parcel sizes. After review of the application, it actually met all the criteria. There was one portion that had a small sliver that was already in the process of the paperwork with the assessor to have that combined to another parcel, so there wouldn't be a small sliver that's in there. And it was passed by the Planning Commission.
It passed unanimously?
Yeah.
Okay, so on that?
We'll move that we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation for the rezoning of this parcel.
I have a support?
Support.
Any more discussion?
One comment, I would like to know, what is this application, $400 or 15, 15 on it? If anyone knows.
400.
Do we need a roll call on here? Is any other, anything else? Any other?
No, we don't need a roll call on this one.
Yes.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Anytime there's this zoning change, yeah.
Roll call then.
View?
Yes.
Prozdel?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Uh, Jensen?
Yes.
And Melner?
Yes. Okay, motion passed. We will move on to number five. FY '24 Emergency Management Department's Grant, EMPG Agreement.
This is an annual grant agreement that we have with the Michigan State Police for the emergency management program. The only change in this agreement, besides dates and whatnot, is the decrease in funding. So this is a 60% decrease in funding. It will require an adjustment in our budget to recognize this loss of revenue. So we're seeking approval to sign the agreement, the grant agreement.
Need a motion?
I'll move that we assign the agreement in the amount of, for the grant of $9,648 from the Michigan State Police.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Just where, what portion of this grant money, the 60%, is not going to be funded now? Do you know, I mean?
It's the Emergency Management Department and the general fund.
Okay, so is it wages, or is it equipment, or?
Uh, it's wages.
Okay.
Majority of the cost for that department is wages. And we were expecting a decrease this year, just not 60%. So.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number six, Motorola service contract.
This is again an annual renewal, well, this one's actually, it's every three years. It's a service contract with Motorola for dispatches, maintenance, and support for their equipment. There has been no significant changes.
To approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number seven, 2024?
I'm sorry, John.
The 2024, the re, uh, monumentation. Contract amendment.
I was approached to amend the current contract in calendar year '24, so this, this grant works, their grant period is calendar. They had stated that there was some monies available to amend the contract and do more corners, but not facilitated with this grant program. I would recommend that the Finance Committee review this and bring forward a recommendation.
Okay.
So would you just like it tabled?
Yep, or you can send it to the, you make a motion to send it to Finance.
Oh, I'll make a motion to send this to Finance.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Just, just, I'd just like to make note that two of us don't have that agenda item on our iCloud.
Um, there is no supporting documentation?
Oh.
On there. I was asking for it to be sent to Finance.
Yeah, she wants it sent to Finance, that's why it's not there. Yep.
Okay, well, I mean, if we're talking about?
No, that makes sense. Yeah, you're fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number eight, 2025 remon-
Remonumentation.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I can't get it out of my mouth here.
It's a T-bird.
Uh, application.
I call it remon and survey alone. I just dropped the rest of it. Because I, when we say it often. In front of you, the grant agreement, this is for the upcoming calendar year 2025. The changes that are a part of this grant agreement are just new corners to be addressed.
Well, I'll move that we survey and remonumentation, grant application, and is that total $92,007? Is that, is that, do I read that right? For $92,007?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, can I get a motion?
Steve make motion. I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay, number nine, the resignation of M.
Shell?
Sophie and M. Parker, seasonal park.
Baker.
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 These are? Shellafon and Baker, yep.
Baker, sorry.
These are the, the two seasonal employees in the county parks, and we're just requesting recognition for their dedication to the parks, and also send a thank you letter for service. There's no, usually you see like the lump sum payout, and there's nothing affiliated with that.
So we'll send them a letter of recommendation.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
I have a question, though. Should have done it beforehand, but, um, do they get first priority to reapply the following year?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good, because they were good people, so. Sweet, thanks.
Number 10, the appointment to the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission. One opening, probate appointment, and one pro, open probate.
This item is just for acknowledgement of the appointment made by Judge Lund for the Soldier and Sailor.
So we don't have to have a motion on it?
No.
Because it's already?
Put it on file if you would like, but.
Just want to congratulate Scott Chris Churney for stepping up, or Steve, I mean, yeah. I don't like using my own name.
Oh, I see, okay.
Stepping up and taking this position for our?
Do we want to put a motion out there to put it on file?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to place the appointment on file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 11, airport investigation, release of the Attorney Graham's documents, emails to the Commissioners.
Uh, this was a requested item from Commissioner Van Genhoven. Would you like me to? So Commissioner Van Genhoven is seeking approval from the board to release all of the documentation that was given to Attorney Graham for the airport investigation last year, but not released to the public, released to the, to her.
And just so that we could have security clearance in order to move forward with that. Make the motion to approve.
All support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed.
So just to clarify, it's being released to the Commissioners, not to the public?
That's correct.
Right, right now.
Number 12, early voting election workers.
The Personnel Committee has approved the creation of the early voting election workers as required by the state law. They also approved the exemption, or recommended, I'm sorry, not approved. They also approved the exemption, or recommended, I'm sorry, not approved, recommended the pre-hire requirements for the early voting election workers only for the twenty twenty-four November election. So just on back history, the state of Michigan has these requires, which we all know, for the early voting. The state also requires, has requirements for the election workers. This approval that the Personnel Committee allows for the flexible hiring of the necessary staff to accommodate the newly implemented nine-day early voting period as mandated by the voters in November of twenty-two. To streamline the process, Delta County Clerk has consolidated early voting into one singular location along with the Township Clerks. This approach will alleviate the burden on the individual townships, which typically handle the election worker hiring. To comply with the recent state requirements for payroll documentation, administration will incorporate these early voting workers into our twenty twenty-four payroll systems. The County Clerk will then seek reimbursement from the state of Michigan for eligible expenses with any remaining costs to be billed to the participating townships.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question. How is that gonna work between the townships, for example, they don't all pay their election workers the same, and then some, like their chair, if their chair happens to be working early voting, they get paid more if it's weekends. I know that changes, so, how does that affect?
Yeah, the city and town, the city and township clerks meet monthly. We have a monthly meeting, and we had determined what those three categories of payment, well, actually it's four categories, but it's three different pay scales, uh, what the election workers would be paid, and the agreement is, whatever the state doesn't reimburse, the townships will reimburse, so...
So townships make the difference, okay?
They will make the difference, yeah.
You need that to go to finance then after?
We have no obligation for the cost.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a pass-through. We, we pay the election workers, but then we get reimbursed.
I didn't know if you were having to create an activity for it, though.
Um, no, it's gonna go into the clerks.
Okay.
The election budget.
And it's a one-time, just for this year.
Yeah, it's for this calendar year only.
Going forward.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, general public comment. General public comment. See none? We will move on to Commissioners' comments.
Me.
Yes.
Why am I always first? My goodness. Um, let's see here. Oh, I had, was very busy this last month. Um, well, I know Ketch is all up, a UP conference I attended, the Township Association I attended, and also I attended in the Q... I was asked by Commissioner Jensen. He was not able to make it, so I filled in for him. Also, there was two ribbon cuttings in Escanaba that the Commissioners were invited to, and I attended both of them, and that was I Love Mac and Cheese, or I Heart Mac and Cheese. And the other one I attended was on Main Street Kin Boutique and
Hair Salon.
Hair Beauty Salon or something. Um, I, I know it's, it's what it was, and they, what I was really like, I couldn't figure out why they would name it Kin. And when we, we were there getting ready for the ribbon cutting, um, they said because Kin means family. And it's her daughter, that's the beautician, and she runs the boutique, so that's why it's called Kin. I thought it was kind of unique, something different. The other thing I attended, which I was very happy I did, um, I went to the graduation at the courthouse for the sobriety and drug court. And, uh, let me tell you, I walked out there, out of there, a kind of a different outlook, a different perception on things. Uh, three people had graduated. All three came from total different backgrounds. It wasn't what you typically hear. One of the persons was born with a tumor on her tailbone, so for the first six months of her life, she was on a very high, um, uh, drug for pain. So when you hear their stories and you, you see them up there and you see that it's standing room only in the courtroom, we were in the, the one straight-up courtroom, um, I just couldn't believe it. It was very nice. Judge Parks did a wonderful job. Um, nobody, nobody in that courtroom, including me, and Mr. Parks had a Kleenex wiping our nose. I would recommend if anybody on the Commission can go to the next one, I don't know how often they have them, but it is something to see. I highly recommend going there. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Commissioner View.
I, I, I get a lot of stuff, but my main, my main concern right now is my... Why is that off? Uh, my, my main concerns, I'd like to address the board, what was Pine, Pinecrest Medical Care Facility. We were given a budget. Uh, it looks like we're gonna be, have a surplus of fifty thousand four hundred thirteen dollars for next year, which I was very happy with compared to what happened for the previous year. They were looking at Whispering Pines, and I've talked to the administrator about this. It's an adult foster care home setup that they have little houses all over Delta County, Escanaba, Gladstone, Powers. And they, they offer that adult foster care services, and I don't know how they broke away from Pinecrest, but we're still looking into it 'cause they're a separate entity. And Pinecrest has made a, a pitch at the last meeting that they wanna start charging them for the services that are shared, their portion. And I kinda looked at everything they wanted to charge, and it comes up to about fifteen thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars a month, which I, I, I don't know where that'll fit into their budget, but it seems like a steep change from what was being done before when I used to go to, when I went to the Whispering Pine meetings, it was like three thousand dollars or somewhere in that area. That's, you know, five times as much, so... Their Finance Committee on both ends are looking at what they can do to offer these services. I, I thought they should still be part of Pinecrest, that we, we support them and it shouldn't be a separate entity, but I did get ahold at a MAC Health and Human Services Committee. I brought that issue up about Pinecrest, the, uh, bed availability plan and stuff like that, and Renee Bennick, Executive Director of the Michigan Council of Medical Care Facility Council, was at that meeting. And it worked out really good, 'cause she offered her services to us, so I emailed the administrator, the CFO, and a couple of Commissioners to get their ideas and see if we can plan something, 'cause she's willing to do online or Zoom into our meetings to help us decide how they can assist us in moving forward to get this facility up to capacity. Also, she did say that there are just over thirty county-run facilities. The counties don't have to run them, but Pinecrest is the most unique in that it is ran, but the only one in the state of Michigan ran by multiple counties. So that, that was pretty interesting to hear that. During that same day, Dickinson, Delta Dickinson Menominee County Health Department, Human Services, we were given, uh, what they do is licensed foster homes, adult protection services, child protection services. Their office is located right across from the courthouse, second floor of the Licensed Bureau, so if anyone needs information about stuff like that. They were really hurting for workers. They were running on fumes. They finally hired fi, fi, five or six new ones in Delta County to administer the program. They call them rookies, but there's one left there that has some tenure that can guide them. They got some grants for a fingerprint machine, which is, I guess they need it quite often because they, they were, there was always scheduling conflicts when they had the fingerprint, whoever, for whatever. And Delta County was chosen the place to have it. And it's at the, at the second floor up there, but it's only can be used for their, for their department. Then later on, they got another grant, and now there's one in Menominee County. So I thought, I thought that was pretty nice that we, they can move forward with, uh, not relying on a third party to hire people or to check on foster care people, because everyone has to have background check fingerprints nowadays. I'm surprised I don't have to have it for going out to eat. Just, I mean, it, sometimes it just, just the way the world is. Also at that meeting, I got an invoice, and it says, uh, they gave it to me, and I don't know why, but the other counties said they're not wanting to join the Michigan County Social Service Associations. I'll pass this on to Ashley. She can look at it and decide whether it's something she feels we should pay for just ourselves at Delta County, but it's twelve hundred and sixty-two dollars. And it's got a page of what it does for your county. Hey, I just said I'd bring it forward, let people, let our administrator look at it. Uh, finally, I wanna congratulate everyone that voted. Hopefully, we have a hundred percent turnout. But I know there's gonna be a few people sick, but just remember, we still got time. Veterans bill is on there. I think that's pretty, pretty important to, uh, think of our vets, and, um, other than that, I'm done.
Commissioner Kelly.
I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Veterans Day on Monday. Yeah, that's it.
Commissioner Jensen.
Um, yeah, we'll, we'll keep this brief as well. The, uh, the bulk of what we had since our...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I was just gonna like pass all of my things on to Matt this time because he says that I take up all, you know, 'cause we sit on all... Now, now, tonight's, tonight's your turn, Matt, 'cause we sit on all the same boards together.
Yeah, we do. Uh, I was gonna say, actually, the bulk of, um, getting since we've had a three-week break from our last board meeting is the big, the big heavy lift has been the contract negotiations, I think, for the most part. Same thing with what we already had done with the airport, and of course, that's gotten pushed back, uh, another week. So that, those were the bulk of what we had finished up. The other one was, of course, the fair did their, their roundout, close up for the year. They say they are on track to have the new bathroom and bathhouse facility done for August of next year when the fair opens. That's, that's our plan going forward. That's the, the big takeaway out of that, so, um, thank you, everyone, and Nancy.
Okay. Well, voting is, uh, is still going on, and two hours left to vote, and, um, we've had a great voter turnout, especially early voting, forty-four thousand one hundred and forty-one, which is about four thousand more than we had in August. So that's incredible, and, um, I just wanna thank the voters for their patience. They were very good. Um, at times, there was an hour and a half wait. Um, we did get it down to twenty minutes or less. Um, a lot of times, there were less than twenty minutes. Brought a second printer in, got toner for the second printer, and, um, then we were in business, so... But the, the workers, I really have to give a shout out to my election workers because they did a fantastic, um, job. I mean, they on, at first Saturday, they worked for fourteen hours without a break. I didn't even know if they went to the bathroom because it was so crazy busy, so, they were just fantastic and, and, um, kept going.
Thank you for all your work, Nancy.
Yes, thank you.
So my job was to make sure they didn't run out of anything, and I was able to do that.
It's been a long week for you. Thank you.
So...
Administrator Young.
All right. I just wanna say also, happy, uh, Veterans Day, and thank you to all those veterans out there, and also good luck to all the hunters in the upcoming deer season.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, myself, I, uh, Thursday, I'll be going to my first MAC meeting down in Lansing, so that'll be interesting. Be a lot of learning to go on, so, but other than that, we'll keep it short, and we'll get out of here and let Nancy go do her thing.
Meetings.
Meeting schedules.
Yes. Meeting schedule. Uh, Finance meeting, eleven, seven, twenty-four, eight-thirty, room two-twenty-two. Regular Board of Commissioners meeting, eleven, nineteen, at five-fifteen, right here in the service room. Uh, notice of thirty-day appointments. None. Uh, need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.